Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting of March 10th and ask you to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And that will move us on to roll call for our meeting.
Chair Namath?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Fargusain?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Wonderful, we are all in attendance this evening. And that will bring us to item four on our agenda, the review of our agenda.
You do have a memorandum on the dais. There was a minor typographical error in the minutes, so that's been provided to you, and that is it.
All right, thank you very much. Item five, may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Fargusain and a second from Commissioner Smith. May we please have a voice vote on the motion.
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fargusain?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The motion passes with five yes votes. That will bring us to the public comment section for consent calendar items and any items that are not on our agenda. Our consent calendar this month consists of approving the minutes from last month. So if there is anybody here to speak on that or a non-agenda item, please come forward. All right, seeing nobody. We do have, our item seven is our consent calendar, which is approving our minutes, and there is an amendment to those minutes. If I could get a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Make a motion to approve minutes as amended.
All right, I have a motion and a second. May I please get a roll call vote?
Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Fargusain?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Sorry, yes. Excuse me.
You had to time those better. All right, let the record reflect that the minutes are approved as amended with five yes votes. That brings us to our public hearing section, item eight A.
This item will be presented by Sarah Stacknick. Good evening, planning commissioners. Before you this evening is a request to establish a tobacco retailer for the sale of tobacco and smoking product, smoking-related products. Sorry about that. For tobacco and smoking-related products located at 1823 East Palmdale Boulevard. The project site is located within the yellow area of this aerial photo. The business will take over an existing tenant space of a developed shopping center. The proposed tobacco retailer is an allowable use within the general commercial zone, subject to approval of a conditional use permit application. No exterior modifications are proposed, and the proposed hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily. There will be two employees each working a six-hour shift. As shown in the floor plan, all merchandise will be located within display cases or behind counters, allowing only store employees to have immediate access to tobacco and smoking products. In addition, all store employees will be required to attend a responsible tobacco retailer training program and comply with all conditions of approval and applicable laws regarding the advertising, display, or sale of tobacco and smoking products. Pursuant to the Palmdale Municipal Code, tobacco retailers have a 500-foot distance separation requirement from sensitive uses. As shown here, there are no sensitive uses within 500 feet of the proposed business location. In addition, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department provided a summary of calls for service for the project site between February 1st, 2021, and February 1st, 2022. And the report indicates that there were nine calls for service, all of which were routine in nature. The Sheriff's Department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of this conditional use permit. And with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number PC 2022-014, approving conditional use permit 21-011, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stacknick. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time?
I'm sure the staff can answer, but I'll ask the question anyway. With respect to the nine calls that were, that came from this service, I understand it was routine, but do you know what the nature of those calls were? Did it involve any kind of drug paraphernalia?
No, they were either false alarms or some other related. It wasn't anything related to activity that was unusual.
Was staff provided with a report from the sheriff's station?
Yes.
An actual written report?
Yes.
Is there any disagreeing why it's not in this report?
Um, no.
In our package, I mean.
No.
Okay, thank you.
We usually, the data's a little bit raw, so we don't usually include the sheet that they give us in the report, but we use that to update the information so that we provide you at least the information that is in that report, so that you have it before you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other technical questions for staff? All right, and at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item, and I would like to ask anyone who is here to speak on this item, when you come forward, please state your name. You will have three minutes to speak. And I'd like to remind you, this isn't a dialogue. We are here to listen to you, so use your time wisely, and we will try to get any questions you have answered at the conclusion when it's our discussion time. I do have a speaker slip here from a Marcos Alvarez, so you may please come forward. And you can state your name again if you want. I stated it for you.
I'll say this, Madam Alvarez.
Okay, and I understood that.
Hello, everybody. My first time in this condition, uh, our planning commission, so.
I'm learning, so I don't want to speak out of turn. However, the young lady here spoke about, thank you for asking, Mr. Smith, the nine calls. If we're going to present a proposition to pass an ordinance of this matter, it would be prudent and important to come up here in detail, those nine calls, to help this commission make a decision if those calls are valid in deciding to approve this or not. Something to think about. I don't want to speak out of turn, and I understand the 500-foot radius, that it doesn't have any sensitivity issues when they want to come up with this business. But I ask you this, around here and throughout the country, suicide rate for teenagers throughout our schools is at an all-time high, especially in the animal valley. So if we're going to do and award CUPs, and I don't question your motive, but I do understand that when we do CUPs, we do it in a way that produces productivity and promotes mental health and positive businesses for the younger that are coming up after us. So what do I mean by that, right? There's better ways to make profit. I respect the businesses that want to make business out here to stimulate our economy, but not at the backs of people with mental health, of our youth, okay? So there's, I'm embracing the fact that they want to start a business, but when you see how in the movie industry, for years, they've took out tobacco because of what it promoted, it's not cool anymore. And with the health problems throughout America, how tobacco impacts our youth and adults alike, with respect to cancer and other issues. And the last time I checked, there was over, I never started, didn't I? I guess I still have three minutes, right? No. In the 93550 area code, right, we had, last time I checked, I may be off by a few numbers, a skewed 45 CUPs, whether they're related to tobacco or not is to be questioned, but I will close with this. I've been married for almost 22 years, and I remember the first day I went out on a date with her, and I told her, look, you're beautiful, inside and out, but that cigarette, that's got to go. And she made that sacrifice, and we've been happily ever since. So something to think about, it's always a testimonial on who it affects when we buy and sell tobacco. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Rosie Minella. Nice to see you all. I'm here to speak on, well, on behalf of myself as a resident of over 30 years and a mother of 20, almost 30 years also, but, um, so I went looking in that area because I drove by and I saw the sign for the CUP, and I noticed that there was a new tobacco store coming in. And then I went around and I looked around the neighborhood, and there's already five other places that sell tobacco and vaping products in that community. Like Marco just said, um, this affects our community adversely. It also provides for, um, for students to normalize smoking, vaping, and tobacco use, which is not healthy for them, and it's not healthy for their siblings and for the rest of the community either. The last I heard, we were going to be banning all flavor products in the city of Palmdale, and now all of a sudden, we're having a new tobacco shop come in. I walked a few paces away and from the place where this new business is coming in, and the store right across the way is also selling tobacco and vaping products. I asked, and they said that they do. The Bayarta also sells that kind of stuff, and then you guys are going to place this business right next to La Mixaana, which is an ice cream shop, the only ice cream shop in the radius. So it makes it so that it's, to me, even though it's far away, according to your new laws, I mean, according to the laws that you have, I hope that you would think about like changing those laws and creating a longer distance or a more of a sensitive areas. Across the way, there's a church whose next door is another vaping shop. Across the street, there's another vaping shop and the Pyramid Market. So what are we doing, especially in that area? We already have 84 stores that sell tobacco. I looked it up. So 84 in the city of Palmdale. Why do we need so many when we're trying to create a healthier and more equitable community for us? These are also members of our community that are more vulnerable, right? Whenever something is going wrong in their community, they go to drinking, smoking, and things that we shouldn't be using.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. So I gave you guys some notes, a little letter that we wrote, so that way you guys have everything that I didn't say right now, and hopefully you will take it into consideration in changing the rules and the laws that apply here. Why do we need six tobacco stores within that little intersection? We already have five. Do we need more? I say no, especially right next to the ice cream shop, where they say that most of the kids congregate there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Minella. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? We have somebody in the calling inland. Okay. One moment, let me get the one that's on the phone here, and then we'll.
Xavier Flores, feel free to unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, yes, I'd like to read off this document that we put together. Though there's no distance requirement from one tobacco outlet to another, in the city's tobacco ordinance, this does not mean that allowing another tobacco outlet in its proposed location would have no negative effect on the health and safety of residents. As we all know, the opposite is true. This knowledge should be enough to justify denial of the application. Complying with an ordinance because it is within the law, when it is clear that such an harmful result of injury could be detrimental to the health of the citizenry, goes contrary to the city's mandate to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its residents. Therefore, we need that the commission should deny the application because of the poor health of local residents that already exist, and the probability of their health would be worsened by yet another tobacco outlet. In addition, the staff report states that only, that there are only nine calls have been made for surveys for the project site and defines these as being routine in nature. This description is extremely vague and needs to be more clearly defined, especially when dealing with an application of a type of business that has been proven to be linked to poor health and high crime rates. Additionally, the staff report should include the number of all Part I and Part II crimes committed during the past year in the census tract where the applicant business is located. This data, as Mr. Marcos Alvarez stated earlier, is critical to the formation of a well-informed decision by you, the planning commission. You should have this data, and you shouldn't have to be forcing staff to provide it for you. It should be routine. Lastly, the applicant address is 590 feet away from the Palmdale High School, 890 feet from La Petite Academy, and 900 feet from Thomas Scott University, all sensitive sites. Instead of granting this CUP, the planning commission should use this opportunity to urge city staff to increase the distance to sensitive sites from 500 to 1,000 feet, which would more effectively and appropriately safeguard the health and safety of residents and avoid these applications from coming to you in the first place. Including other tobacco outlets on the list of sensitive sites is another policy change you should recommend today as a result of this application. I hope you take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. You kept it right at the three-minute mark. Thank you, Javier. Okay, is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
My name is Fuad Karum. I'm the applicant for the tobacco store.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Fuad Karum.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I want to talk about myself. I don't know the gentleman that talked before me. We do operate a clean business and a good model business. I'm part of the store on 22315 East Palmdale Boulevard. It's one of the oldest tobacco stores in the state of California, actually. It's been here forever and still existing and still going. We don't have any complaints. We don't even sell two minors. We don't even have tickets. We go by the law, whatever, you know, by the, like, the license we get. So I don't see any problem in operating another location in the city of Palmdale under the law, under the same type of license we get, whatever measures you guys give us, and whatever restrictions they are, we're going to go with them, you know? But we already applied, we got the lease, and we already went that far, you know, not to get rejected at the end, I mean, at the last minute. And I appreciate you guys all, and hopefully we'll be approved.
Okay, do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Do you remain on the premises throughout the week, or do you have staff?
Two, three days a week. Yeah, we, two, three days a week.
Two, three days a week?
I don't say seven days a week, no.
Okay.
But we do like, in this store, we have like three girls part-time, and the new store, we're going to have at least two, two jobs. So we're creating jobs. We're, you know, we're involving with the community. You can ask anybody about our store and how we operate, and, you know, we are very clean. We do very clean business, so.
And are you aware of the nine calls that were visited by the sheriff's department at your facility, or at that facility?
Not our facility.
Not your facility?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But usually, if the calls come, sometimes we call, like, if there's any problems, some homeless peoples or something, and that, I don't, that's, that's what type of calls we sometimes do, but not other than that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you familiar with the ordinance that, that recent, that there are no vaping products, paraphernalia?
Yes, I am.
So do you sell anything of that nature in your current store?
Yes, we do.
And your intention would have been to sell that in this location, but it is not allowed to be.
We're going to sell tobacco products, but we, as I already explained to assistant planner, like, we're going to wait to see what the decision is going to be. I was going to talk to Mr. Drew. I know, I thought I contacted the attorney, Joseph. I don't know, he's, he's part of, uh, I never talked to you yet, but, I mean, I don't know if Joseph called you or something.
Because the way things are operating in the city right now is you are not allowed to sell flavored electronic cigarette products.
I heard, I thought like the, the motion was on hold till November, till the state decision is going to come, so that's what my understanding was.
That is incorrect.
When, no, when we applied, there was no, the motion was on hold. That's what our understanding was.
Okay.
We applied for the permit.
All right. Mr. Pletcher, could you please explain the current status of our ordinance?
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. So as of February 16th of this year, City Council recently decided to no longer suspend Section 5.04.670 of our Palmdale Municipal Code regulating tobacco and smoking products for retailers, which includes fairly heavy regulation on the flavored electronic cigarette product market and the various flavors that you can get. What you mentioned in terms of you, the, any suspension or on hold till the fall relates to the state level, the state regulations specifically SB 793, which was passed in August of 2020. Just a little context for everybody in the audience, and, and, you know, it's very, August 2020, Senate Bill 793 is passed, shortly thereafter, signed by the governor. After the passage, a group of tobacco manufacturers filed a number of lawsuits preventing, seeking to prevent the bill from going into effect. There is a referendum on the ballot this upcoming fall entitled "The California Flavored Tobacco Products Ban", which would essentially give the voters the right to determine the fate of the state law. So that, that is correct in what you mentioned, that there's a lot of debate at the state law. However, it is within the, it is within the ability of the city of Palmdale to also regulate in that space. And City Council, as I mentioned, on the 16th, decided to go forward with the regulation, no more suspension. So you would tonight, and as part of your conditions of approval, be expected to follow 5.04.670. And I'd recommend you reach out to city staff if you do have another store in the, in the city, because that would also be applicable to your current store.
Yeah, that's what I told the, the, Madam Chair, like, February 16th, we applied before February 16th. You said February 16th of this year, yeah? You just had the meeting?
It is, and that's.
Yeah, we applied before. That's what I was trying to say.
Oh, no, and certainly, I understood your question. The law would still apply to your store, even if you were current, let's say you were currently operating today, like you have your other store. This new law applies to currently operating stores, actually all tobacco retailers across the city, as well as any new applicants that come in seeking a CUP, seeking to operate and sell flavored tobacco products. So no matter if you're currently in operation or an applicant, this law would apply to, you know, your business.
Yeah, and in this case, like, after the 793, SB 793, let's say it passes and it's coming in the ballot and coming fall, what's, what's going to happen? What's our, uh, fate is going to be?
So obviously, things, you know, the legal landscape at the state level changes monthly, but city staff is aware of the, uh, the referendum that the voters will be voting on, and we are. are, will explore potential changes to our local ordinance based on what the voters inevitably do. Because it really comes down to, obviously, the state can set a foundational limit to what regulation is, the city traditionally can go beyond it or match it. So staff is well aware, we're tracking it, and we're going to re, we, we always are going to reevaluate based on what the fall 2022 actions are.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I, I do.
Please come back? Yes.
Yes, sir.
You are not dismissed.
I'm not that familiar with tobacco stores. I'm just curious, like, what tobacco products do you sell? For example, cigars?
Cigars, yeah.
But I, I notice you have no humidor in the building.
Yeah, we're going to have a wall humidor, yeah, we do. It's a cabinet, it's a wall humidor cabinet.
Okay, well, on page two of my report, it says the proposed project does not include a humidor.
Not the build, not a room, not a cigar room. We have, we do have a cigar room, humidor room.
Okay.
And the current one, existing one now, a small one, but we're planning to do a wall unit humidor.
Okay, so the, the tobacco products you're selling are cigarettes?
Cigarettes.
Regular cigarettes, cigars, and what else?
Yeah, all kinds of accessories.
As far as tobacco goes, what else besides cigars and cigarettes?
Tobacco, rolling tobacco.
Okay.
All kind of tobacco bags, rolling tobacco, cigars, cigarettes, wraps, I mean, all kind of stuff.
Okay. You just educated me, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a couple people virtually with their hands up.
Okay, wonderful. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, then, Miguel, let's go to the first caller.
Estefania Rodriguez, please feel free to unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Estefania Rodriguez. I am a Palmdale resident and an active member of the Smoke Free Coalition, and I am calling today to express my concern of the approval of this smoke shop. It is upsetting to imagine another smoke shop in our community, let alone in my family's neighborhood. Shell and Seven-Eleven are in walking distance and available for adults to purchase tobacco products, and by opening another smoke shop, we are normalizing the visibility of smoking and vaping to our children and youth, especially to those from nearby elementary and middle school, which my nieces and nephew attend. It's a known fact that smoking and secondhand smoke in any amount is harmful to the health, to all of our health, and causes negative health effects to anybody who is exposed. And by opening the smoke shop, it will contribute. Personally, I don't see any health benefits in allowing this smoke shop to open, as additional access to these tobacco and vaping products will continue to increase the negative exposure of smoking, toxic waste, exposure to secondhand smoke, and contribute to nicotine addiction. I am here to advocate for the protection of our community's health, and as planning commissioners, I hope you can also see the negative impacts that this smoke shop can bring. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. Our next caller?
X, feel free to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Oscar Canales. I come from a very holy land in Key, where the rivers meet the oceans and where there is abundance of life, and we all live in peace and harmony, and the roads are paved with gold. I would love to take the beginning of my speech to acknowledge our grandmother, Toy Pudding, our ancestor who revolted for freedom, who, whom was exiled from her land by her own people and labeled insane for standing up for what is right and true. The American people for too long have been irresponsible free people. Even after generation after generation, they become less free. They don't recognize it. They have lost the ability to critical thought. In order to regain critical thought, all you have to do is read your Constitution and then look at the laws that govern you, especially from the federal perspective. It's unconscionable to allow your freedom to be taken away decades after decade, year after year. They economically forced us onto these prisoner war camps by destroying our food supply and our rite of passage in our own land. They confined us to these. They began perfecting their colonial power and tactics. What has happened now to America because of irresponsibility of your forebears and because of irresponsibility of yourselves, now you are now on one huge reservation. All policies, all policies were bred and born and birthed on Indian reservation, then exported to the world and now comes back to the American people. You have a near-perfect documents in the words of Benjamin Franklin, seventeen forty-four, he said to a collection of colleagues discussing freedom. He said to them, "If a nation to the north can form a near-perfect union that has endured for centuries, why can't we form a more perfect union?" Unquote. They're talking about the Iroquois Confederacy, and they were, that's where it comes from. On the anniversary, on nineteen eighty-eight, on the two-hundred-year anniversary, it was a unanimous letter sent by Congress thanking and writing, they sent a letter to the Six Nations, the Iroquois Confederacy, thanking them for their input in the Constitution. So the Constitution is Indian law, that's why I love it. The history of the Indian and the history of the American have come full circle and intertwined, and the dictatorial policy of those that control the monetary system, they have done such a bad job that they are now destroying themselves. It's ludicrous. Welcome to the reservation. The reason we have become so materially minded is because Americans don't have culture. They have left their culture behind. When you allow your individual rights to be taken away, that's when your rights are being stripped away. If you have culture, you have values and honor. You honor your land, and now it's time we unite, and we use all our knowledge and we come together, or else we will all be murdered, all humanity, all living things. Currently, if you don't know, at this moment, they're building killer robots.
Thank you very much, Oscar. Your three minutes are up, and I appreciate your time. Do we have another caller? No more hands up?
No more hands raised at this time.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience wish to come forward and speak? All right, then if there is no objection, I will close the public hearing on this item and open it up for Commissioner discussion or a motion.
I guess with discussion, I, I do have concerns about the nine calls in the service area. That does concern me, especially when we're dealing with tobacco. And again, alcohol use, it just, those two issues are just so severe to me and our community. The Antoa Valley is number one, is the highest number of healthcare issues, has the number of, highest healthcare issues in our state. And every time I turn around, it seems to be that we have another CUP asking for alcohol, asking for tobacco. And I understand the, the business part of it, I understand that we're a business city, but I do think that we do need to take into consideration what's going on with some of our young people and what's happening with the crisis dealing with, dealing with our health issue, and that relates to tobacco as well as alcohol. So I, I, I also want to, you know, thank those who put, put together this committee report. I don't know when you submitted it, I would like to review it a little bit more in detail, but the points that you highlighted here, I think, are very important and relevant for us to consider, so I appreciate you giving us the report and pointing out some things that I didn't see in the reports that we have, so much appreciated for that. So I do have concerns about that.
Any other Commissioner discussion? My concern, I think echoes a lot of what the community has said. I also, from the business perspective, if you cannot sell vaping products and vaping paraphernalia, and I imagine that is a huge cut into what could be a large percentage of your business, because as of February sixteenth, it is a violation of this section for any tobacco retailer or employees to sell or offer for sale or to possess with intent to sell or offer to sell any flavored electronic cigarette product. So that, I imagine, cuts into a huge portion of some of the business model that, that you were looking at. I, anybody else have anything to share or say? Or may I get a...
Well, I was just wondering how were we communicating the passage of this to other retailers that are currently have already a CUP?
Mr. Pletcher can answer that.
Yes, it's a fantastic question. We, city staff has begun the process working with code enforcement. You know, largely the passage of the ordinance itself is really a planning function. Beyond that, we do have a robust code enforcement staff that is meeting to begin to go to these businesses and really introduce this ordinance to get them in compliance. Our job number one, and I can't speak for our code compli, uh, code enforcement staff, but number one's just getting the businesses familiar with the ordinance, and then following up with actual enforcement and what mechanisms that will be, are yet to be determined, but the goal is to just educate our businesses first, followed by discussion of how we can, you know, properly implement that to ensure it meets the goals of the council in passing the ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or emotion?
I make a motion to approve, let me pull it up, CUP, PC twenty-two-dash-zero-one-four, approving the conditional use permit twenty-one-dash-zero-one-one, and find the project incategorically exempt from environmental review.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Frogasains and a second from Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, then may we please have a voice vote?
Chair Namath?
No.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Frogasain?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion passes with three yes votes, and Commissioner Smith and Chair Namath has no votes. That will bring us to item nine, staff communications.
You did receive a tentative agenda for the April meeting, and we do have four items on that agenda, and that was all I had for this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pletcher, anything from your end?
Nothing at this time. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, and that brings us to item ten, Planning Commission Communications. Any comments from the Planning Commission? I do know that Commissioner Frogasains is going to be heading off to the Planning Commissioners Academy, so go, do well, learn lots, and please attend Dysfunction Junction, because that has to be one of the more fun activities there. And I would like to say thank you very much to staff for educating us this evening prior to our meeting on the new codes and all of that. So thank you, that was a good use of our time. And thank you to Ms. Staknick for doing a great job in presenting all of this to us this evening. Anybody who's interested, on March nineteenth, the city and a cohort from the Wellness Lab that has been taking place is having a Vietnam Veteran Welcome Home Ceremony right out here at Pons Atlan Square from ten AM to three PM. So if you have time on March nineteenth, please join us to welcome home our Vietnam veterans who were not so kindly welcomed home fifty years ago. And with that, I shall adjourn our meeting to our regular Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, April fourteenth at seven PM. Thank you all for coming, thank you for your time and all of your work.